Well, if all of you in the audience are ready, well, I think we'll begin. We normally have a little bigger crowd, but we're glad to have you here. This is our Weber County Commission meeting on this, the Tuesday, the 13th of March, 2018. And attendance today are Commissioner Gibson, Commissioner Ebert, and myself, Commissioner Harvey. Our invocation today will be, we'll ask that Bob Fleur come forward and give us an invocation. And then Marilyn, is that okay? Very good. He's got permission from his mother. Our pledge of allegiance, our pledge of allegiance will be by Ryan Callie, and I'll have the thought for the day.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be here today and grateful to be able to participate in, in our government process. Grateful for our freedoms in the country, in the state, in the area we live. Pray for thy blessings to be with all of us and with our leaders. Pray for that they may be inspired and guided as they make decisions that affect all of us, that we all might be benefited by their work and efforts. We thank thee for these things and ask for thy guidance this day and do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please stand up. Repeat with me. Ready, begin.
Amen. 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 Amen.
We welcome the rest of you here today. In a recent, my thought today is rather short, but it's been rather impactful, at least on my life, especially recently, as it's something that personally, that I need to adopt more in my life, close here and also far away. I don't, I can't tell you the author, but it was in the movie Wonder, about a young man who has a deformed face and his interaction, how he started going to school. But the thought is just this, when given the choice between being right or kind, choose kind. Kindness is, kindness doesn't have to be weak. In all cases that I can think of, kindness sure is appreciated. So that's the thought of the day. We'll move on to item E on our, our agenda today. We have two presentations today. It's an honor to be seated with the two Mothers of the Year in the audience today. One is Mary Lou Waltheus. She's the Ogden City Mother of the Year, and the other one is Marilyn Fleur, who is the Weber County Mother of the Year. Each one of these is, were given an honor recently at the, by the American Mothers Association, and they were presented these awards. There was quite a few nominations, and each were presented awards as they, and then they spoke, and it was great to hear their experiences and what they have done. I'll put the emphasis more on what they've done too. Great examples, and doing what I would call the most important work that we can do here in Weber County. So their, their contribution is now being recognized, not just within the walls of their home, but also in our community. What I'd like each one to do, and I know, I know that it's gonna be in trouble for just this, but Mary Lou, Mary Lou, will you come forward and just say a couple of words? And then Marilyn, I'm gonna ask you to come forward to the mic here and say a couple of words, and then we have a presentation to give to you. Would that be okay? And just, if you would, let people know who you are and just a little about you.
Well, thank you for inviting us here today. It's a blessing to, to be a mother, to live in Ogden, Utah. I was born and raised in Ogden and raised our family in North Ogden, had five sons. I know that Jen Zaudmeister, Mother of the Year in '15, believe she has five daughters. I have five sons. Being a mother has been my life. There, there was a quote that I used at this luncheon from one of the authorities in our church, and it said that motherhood is not a hobby, it is a calling. It is not something to do if we can squeeze the time, and it is what God gave us time for. And it's certainly what has used my time up in my life, and I'm thrilled this very day, my youngest son is bringing home his first baby girl to begin their parenting years. Just one little, I know your time is brief, but I'll just end with just saying, if there were four words I would use about being a mother, is to teach, hug, and love, and repeat. And you'd do that 24/7 for your whole life, and thank you for inviting us here today.
Thank you. Don't go too far, Marilyn. Marilyn, maybe stay on the front row.
When I got the call, the phone call, I'd rather stand this way. I really would. When I got the phone call from the lady that called me about this event, I said, "Now, I won't have to talk, will I?" And she said, "No." "Where is she? Are you here?" "Oh, there she is." I'm not good at this kind of thing, but I do appreciate the recognition, and it's the last thing in the world that I ever thought I'd be awarded, the Mother of, Mother of the Year. So I'm grateful for my family and for the kind care and keeping that they are to me at this time. My husband passed away in, oh goodness, 1999, Christmas Eve no less, so anyway. But my family rallied around me and they still let me tell them what to do, and then they do exactly what they want. So anyway, I'm grateful for all the many blessings and opportunities that are afforded me at this time, and, but I really could have done without this little moment. I'm glad she stayed here. I might have to have her help me back to my seat. Thank you so much, and I'm honored to be Weber County's Mothers of the Year.
Thank you. Just for, for both of you, your names are on these, but we've got a book for you, and we've signed them with our own Samoan thoughts. It's The Art of Motherhood.
They need any teaching.
I was just gonna say.
Did you say Samoan thoughts?
Speak Samoan.
You both could have written these, and to the imprints you left with your families you have, I want you to know that this body is united in our respect and our appreciation for what you have done. We appreciate you here. So your names are on a sticky note here because they're individual notes that were written to you. We'd like to come down and present them to you and make sure we keep them in the right order, so is that okay?
Before we go down, kind of.
Oh, that would be appropriate. Thank you.
Once we clap, I'm gonna lose it and it'll be hard, but ladies, I just wanna tell you thank you for being willing to be examples, as you have been, and to come today and do a hard thing and stand in front of this group and, and be recognized. I think that that's one of the things about mothers that is often the case, that they would just assume women do not have the type of recognition that you're seeing today because it's such a selfless thing. But I, I have to, I just wanted to share with you a personal thought that over the last, this is probably the first year in many that I haven't been able to attend your event, and I apologize that I wasn't able to make it, but I love going. I love being with that group. I love being around you all and learning from you. And just a couple of years ago, I lost my mother, and that was a trying time for me, one where I kinda had to reflect and look back on the things that, that I had learned from her and tried to remember who she was and who she wanted me to be. And it has really helped me to recognize and appreciate more the sacrifice of all mothers, and frankly, even more the, the motherhood, mother of my own children. And what a wonderful experience it has been for me to just watch my children now starting to leave the nest. We have six, and to watch them grow up and go out and realize what they have become and who they've become because of your mother. It's just been a tender and a wonderful experience for me. And so to quote another religious quote that I, that I heard once a while ago, "To you mothers who are discouraged, you are doing a tremendous job." And I'm so grateful for the example that you set for each of us, and I can tell you right now, you're, you're the type of mothers being honored today that my children will want to emulate. So thank you so much.
I think a lot's been said. I, I would just, far too often in our communities, we hold up business leaders and politicians and others as the builders of communities, and the true builders of our communities are our mothers. I congratulate you on who you're representing today, and that is mothers within our communities who really build, create our, our amazing social networks that we have. So just thank you so much for, for leading out. I too, believe it or not, have a mother, and I have a beautiful wife, and having examples are always needed. All mothers need help, and they need a handshake, they need a love, they need someone who truly understands them and someone that's a good example in those difficult times. So thank you very much for, for being two of those individuals that not only raised wonderful families, but also probably did more than you really understand to help other mothers. So thank you.
Thank you. If you, the crowd, had joined me giving them a round of applause. Can we get our picture with you? Marilyn, I've already invited you to talk. Picture, is that okay?
That's okay.
Let's count one, two, three. One, two, three. Okay.
One more? One, two, three. Thank you.
Moving on to item F on our agenda, our consent items. Our consent item number one is a request for approval to ratify warrants 1367, 1368, and 426125 to 426295 in the amount of $542,666.69, dated March 6th of 2018. Item two, request for approval of warrants 426296 and 426477 in the amount of $1,024,849.33. Item three is a request for approval to purch, of purchase orders in the amount of $621,145.05. Item four is a request for approval of the minutes for the meeting held on February 27th, 2017. Item five is a request for approval of AHC payment to US Bank in the amount of $121,305.35 for purchasing card transactions made through the billing cycle ending February 26th, 2018. Item six is a request for approval of new business licenses. Item seven is a request for approval of a road dedication in the Drysdale subdivision, a one-lot subdivision located at 1604 South, 4700 West in West Weber. Item eight is a request for approval of a road dedication in the Henry subdivision, a one-lot subdivision located in, at 1354 South, 2900 West in Weber County. Item number nine is a request for approval of the cellphone, the cellphone rescission policy. Item 10 is a request from the Golden Spike Event Center concessions for approval to surplus a hot dog roller.
Sorry. Damn, believe we don't need that. Must have cooked a lot of hot dogs.
Any other comments? Item 11, request from the Weber Morgan Health Department for approval to surplus a computer equipment. Item 12 is a request for approval of the retirement arrangements by and between Weber County in the following. Brett Haycock, Suzanne Sprinkle, Kevin Burton, and Maria, and Servachia? Servachia? Servachia, Kevin? Kevin Burns? How do you say that last name? Servachia? Servachia?
Is that correct?
Good answer.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioners, any discussion on these items? And Mr. Hatch, will you please give us your report?
You bet. We had 47 purchase orders for the amount of $621,000, just over half of that amount, or $327,000 for our roads department. That will be used to purchase asphalt, 38% or $236,000 is for the library, and that's for a mix of things, computers, some brick cleaning, which is surprisingly expensive, and office equipment. For checks, we issued 182 checks this week for $1,000,61% of that, or $495,000 was reimbursement to West Haven City for the road construction on 2550 South. 12% or $124,000 went to the library, and that was for books and materials as well as some building maintenance. And 10% or $106,000 was for IT. That was for a mixture of hardware, software, and telecommunications, and then 6% or $6,000 was payment for employee life insurance.
Terrific. Commissioners, any questions on that? Hear a motion on item F?
I'll make a motion when you approve the consent items.
On second? We have a motion and a second for the consent items. Is Brett? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Well now, just before we go to item G on our action items, I want to recognize Danette Polley in the audience and Steve Crane, who are here with our Recreation Arts Museum and Parks or our Ramp Committee, who've done exhaustive work of allocating or going through applications for these funds on, you know, that are done annually, and you two represent a nice selection, a broad committee, and I, just publicly, to, to the two of you, but to all the committee, we thank you so much for all your work. And so item number one on our consent item, or excuse me, our action items today, is a request from the Weber County Recreation Arts Museum and Parks Board for approval of the 2018 grant funding recommendations. Ms. Halassee, you've also done quite a bit of work.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Along with some of the other staff in our office. Thank you.
Shelley, before you change that picture, thanks to Danette and a whole bunch, that place looks a lot different now, doesn't it?
It really does.
That's pretty cool. Congratulations.
Danette's actually in that picture.
I can see that. She brightens it up quite a bit.
How lucky am I that this is part of my job? I just wanted to give you a brief reminder of how we came to be here today. In 2004 and in 2014, citizens voted to authorize Weber County Ramp to fund enhancement, enhancements for recreation parks, museums, and arts. Ramp is funded by sales tax of 1/10th of 1% of $1 penny for every $10. So the average household spends about $12 a year for Ramp. Weber County has built a national reputation for quality of life based on amenities that Ramp has helped funding. I actually get calls from people in California and places like that asking how we started Ramp. This year for the 2018 Ramp funding, we had $3,690,000 of Ramp tax collected from last year. We took out the administrative fees, the EZ grants, and the returned Ramp grants, and we ended with $3,639,529. To show you how it was distributed, it's split into one-third for majors and two-thirds for arts and rec and, arts and museums and rec and parks. We have 2,000, $2,628,694 in requests for the majors. That's almost one and a half million more in requests than in funding. For arts and museums, we had $1,836,963. That's about 800,000 more than we had for funding. And rec and parks, we had $1,483,649. That's about 400,000 over the amount that we had to fund. But with diligence and dedication, our board funded four majors, 46 arts and museums, and 17 recreations and parks. And the most important thing obviously, as Jim was saying earlier, is to thank our board. This board spends countless hours to make this a great process and a great, great thing to be a part of in Weber County. So with that, I ask that you approve the recommendations for the grant funding this year. Do you have any questions?
No, but I would like to just, if you'd leave that slide up there and publicly, the least we could do is recognize Ann Perry, the Chair, with Rasha Boskiter, Danette Polley, Terry Scow, Ryan Wilkinson, Jeremy Dunn, and Steve Crane on that advisory board. The arts and museum members, Danette, Terry, David Owens, Lacy Richards, Steve Crane again, Jolene Zito and Renee Woods, and then in parks is Rasha Boskiter, Ryan Wilkinson, Tim Hunter, Stephen Scoff, Jeremy Dunn, Colby Buckwalt, and Carla Woodward. So again, thank you so much. This is, just as a matter of public record, there are just a great deal of hours of just volunteer that go into this, just reviewing the list again and making sure that people know there's not an elected official that serves on this board. These are all independents that represent a lot of different variety in, in the communities, and they make decisions based on the qualifications and applications for, for this, for these monies. And so it's very, it's weighted very fairly as it was originally intended to do back 20-something years ago when I remembered this thing coming out, so appreciate it. Commissioners, any comments before I call for a, any action item?
I would just, I, I, sometimes I don't think we truly understand the value of what has been happening in our community from these Ramp dollars, the tremendous community involvement that it takes to put many of these projects together. together goes beyond just the tremendous work that's done by these committees, but also into our community. And the community is really revolving around many of these projects and just creates such a strong community feel. It's the builder of our communities. Uh, and so, I just cannot express my appreciation, not only to the voters who have the vision to see this value, uh, to those who have these projects that have put so much time into creating them, and then the tremendous effort that's put in by our Ramp Committee Board members as they vet these projects, not only initially to approve them, but then to do follow-up to make sure that they're being rolled out appropriately. So, uh, this is a, a huge part of what's building our community. These amenities are why people are moving here, like you said before, and I just, uh, it, it shows what type of community we have. So, thank you for all those who have been so vested in this.
I'll add to that. I, it's clear that recreation is a driver of economic growth and economic development. But I think as we look at some of the things that bring quality businesses and keep them located in our community, we see that more often. Uh, it's not just the economic impact that people are concerned about. It's the quality of life issues. And I, I just love what this community's doing with these, with these funds. I think this committee has been diligent in doing good research and, and put a lot of effort into it, and I just, I'm tremendously grateful for the work that they do. And Shelley, I have to specifically thank you because, um, I know the committee does a tremendous amount of work, but I, you as well, um, just, I, I'll walk to her desk sometimes, and people have come in with these grant applications, and literally, you can't find the desk because there's so much of this information to process and to work through. And, uh, sometimes, uh, we think that, that that just happens. It doesn't just happen. It's, it's a tremendous workload and effort for Shelley, and, and I, I've seen nights when she's been here long after 5 o'clock, uh, processing those and early in the morning, and it just, it's, I'm just grateful. So, thank you for the work that you do to make sure this is all done right. Again, this is a, this is one of those things that, um, even though, uh, uh, we have this advisory committee, the, the commission is responsible to make sure that these tax dollars are spent appropriately, and it gives me tremendous comfort to see, uh, the amount of effort that goes into that process. It makes me, uh, comfortable in approving projects when, when I've seen the process that they have followed. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Ramp projects as presented.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number two, Mr. Wilkinson, is a request for approval, approval of a first reading on a fee ordinance amendment relating to Weber County Community and Economic Development Department. Solid. It's regarding solid waste division, section 16-2-9 on the solid waste fees. Mr. Wilkinson?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We have before you today the first reading of an ordinance that would, uh, amend the general residential, commercial, and industrial tipping fee at the Weber County Transfer Station. The reason for this fee amendment, uh, is that Republic Services, who is contracted to haul our waste, uh, was given an increase by their transportation provider, which is MBI Trucking. Uh, the increase will be $1.24 per ton from the beginning of March through June of this year, and beginning July 1st, that increase would go up to $2.48 per ton. This was discussed with, uh, WACOG at the last meeting. All of the mayors are aware, uh, that this will be affecting their cities, but really, this is just a pass-through, uh, that the citizens of Weber County are going to have to, uh, to take on due to the increase in the transportation costs of, uh, transporting our waste.
Great. Commissioners, any comment or questions?
Did this discussion go through, um, the subcommittee?
It did, yes. The, the subcommittee heard this first, and then it was presented to the full WACOG.
Did they have a recommendation?
Yes. The recommendation was, uh, that this be approved and that the fee increase at the transfer station.
Thank you.
If no other discussion, uh, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion when you approve the first reading of the fee ordinance amendments relating to Weber County Community and Economic Development Department specific to solid waste division. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Just for record, that, for people to know that statutorily, Weber County does not have an obligation to do this. We do this so that we can partner with the cities, so that we can help the cities. This is a partnering effort. And so, just to recover the cost, and so, where the taxpayers are not funding it, they're just recovering the cost as good business. And so, Mr. Wilkinson, thank you again. So, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson.
Thank you.
Mr. Calley, this is a request for approval of contract buying between Weber County and ESNS for the purchase of voting equipment to be used in the Weber County elections.
Hi. I'm Mr. Calley today.
Yes, I see that. You did a nice job with the, the, uh, the pledge itself, so thank you.
Well, I try to fill in as good as possible for, for him. Um, we, uh, this is a, a good contract, but I'm going to ask that we postpone this a week now that the funding has been finalized by the, uh, legislature, and we're going to be receiving some state money. We, we want to update this contract, and this is going to take another week or so to get that done.
Thank you. So, Commissioners, we'll hold item number three and also item number eight on our agenda. And three and eight will be held. Thank you.
Hope that doesn't mean we're not going to have racing pigs.
No, we'll, we'll get to that.
I'm just checking.
Flying pigs, I think.
At the fair. At the fair. Says racing.
Okay. Uh, number four is a request for consideration. And Mrs. Felix, Yeverino, for consideration and action for final approval for Rackliff subdivision, consisting of one lot with a request to dedicate to the county 1,190 square feet in the area of 1800 South, and to defer asphalt curb gutter and sidewalk. Mr. Yeverino?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, what we have before you is, um, a request from Mr. and Mrs. Rackliff for final approval of Rackliff subdivision. A small subdivision consisting of one lot that fronts directly on 8800 South Street, located approximately 4435 West, 1800 South, and Taylor. Uh, there will be area dedicated along the public right-of-way measures, 7 feet by 170 feet, for the future expansion of 1800 South to, to, uh, expand it to 80 feet. The lot contains 2.41 acres that is currently vacant, and the proposed subdivision conforms to both zoning and subdivision requirements, including adequate area and frontage. So, on, on February 13th, 2018, the, the Western Weber Planning Commission recommended final approval of Rackliff subdivision consisting of one lot with a request to dedicate to the county 1,190 square feet in area to 1800 South Street and to defer the asphalt curb gutter and sidewalk. Uh, the approval is recommended with the following conditions: that a deferral agreement for asphalt curb gutter and sidewalk be entered into by the owner and recorded with the final mylar. And the second condition of approval was that, uh, Taylor West Weber provided a letter, um, indicating that, that, um, half a share of secondary water, um, has been held, um, by, by the district. That was one of the requirements for providing, uh, culinary water to this one lot subdivision. Uh, you have any questions for me?
So, right now, it's for one residential unit? Is that correct?
Yes, one residential lot, yes.
Residential lot.
Mm-hmm.
I heard you say wow about the water, Commissioner. Sorry, maybe it was under your breath, but that's, I just wanted to let you know that that's a fairly common practice, that the water districts, as they, um, offer to provide a culinary water, they, they expect they, a culinary water hookup, they expect some kind of water to put into the system as a trade for that.
It sounds, and thank you very much. It sounds responsible, especially with the deferral agreement. Uh, it's great. I'll entertain a motion, Commissioners.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, Rackliff, final approval of Rackliff subdivision one lot with the request to dedicate the 1.190 square feet.
I have a motion. And I think it's important that I also say, and the deferral of curb gutter and sidewalk.
Thank you. Right, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, for item number four. If no other questions or comments, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Yeverino.
Thank you.
Ms. Stewart, a request for approval of the local transportation funding agreement by and between Weber County and Plain City for 3,500 West project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brooke.
Yes, Commissioners, we have before you today a local transportation funding agreement with Plain City for the 3,600 West project. They're proposing to, uh, reconstruct and widen about .64 miles of 3,600 West between 1975 North and 2,600 North. It'll include the installation of center turn lanes at key intersections, and then we'll also be, um, including the safety improvements of curb gutter sidewalks and crosswalks for the pedestrians and schoolchildren that are, um, going back and forth between the school there and, um, the new development of the grocery store down there. Plain City is contributing $210,642 towards the project, and they've also received a little over 2.9 million, um, in funding from WFRC and S, STP funds. They're requesting $124,108 in corridor preservation funds for the right-of-way acquisitions, and then also $420,360 in sales tax funds for the construction. This was, uh, part of the recommendation that the subcommittee made before WACOG in December and was approved, and was brought before the commission on the December 12th meeting, was approved as part of the priority list. So, with that, we're just asking for your approval, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the formality and the, and the, and the history on that. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any more discussion?
Just a comment that, uh, you know, this is a vast-growing area of the county in Plain City with the, like, grocery store in the area, the, the school, the elementary school that's new, a lot of residential construction, and, and, uh, I think it's a good project. It makes sense for the people, uh, in that area, and, uh, I'm on that road fairly often, and I, I can definitely see the value here. I, I think it's a great, uh, example of, of this fund and, and how valuable it's been, uh, to our community. So, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the local transportation funding agreement between Weber County and Plain City for 3,600 West.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second for item number five on our, on our action items. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Wilson, item number six, what I'd like to do is item number six, seven, and nine, you'll make those presentations on those three things. The, the first one is, uh, it's all having to do with the Weber County Fair, and I'll just let you describe those, if that'd be okay.
Please talk about the racing pigs.
Okay. The racing pig contract, where, okay, he sent us a contract, and we send it to the county attorney, but it was Christopher's fault.
Chris?
Christopher's fault. He can't do it.
Oh, they're coming. Okay, good.
They are. Um, he just had not had all of the stuff that we needed for the county satisfaction, and so, we've sent it back for his approvals. So, hopefully, next week, we'll have.
I see a lot of kids exercising their pigs during the summer, so I'm hoping.
Yes, I do. I see that, and the lambs.
And the theme for this year's fair, Ms. Wilson, is?
It's a pig deal.
I like it.
So, um, the first contract I hear, have for you today is with Wooden Creations, and this gentleman's name is Mark Holt, and he is actually seen on Carver Kings. It's a show that is on Netflix, and he's been here for a number of years, and he comes in and brings his own redwood from his place in Northern Colorado, or Northern California. Um, he does four carvings a day, which I know all four of you have sit through, and then we auction those off, and his fee is $4,500, but we usually generate at least that amount each year in the carvings auction. So, really, it can be very beneficial to the county, but it is actually something that is kind of became a tradition. And so, that, um, the board has asked that I bring this contract to you for $4,500 and ask for your approval.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, we're going to just, okay. The next one is also a tradition, and it's with the Great Basin Antique Farm Machinery. It's a contract for $800. Jim Harvey is really passionate about this because he was overseeing them while he was at the fair. Um, the next contract is between Weber County and Sean Pulson, and Sean has, um, been our hypnotist for a number of years. He seems to draw a very diverse crowd, and his contract is for $4,000. He does two shows a night, and we rotate them back on different stages to give, um, different angles of the fair. So, do you have any questions for me?
I'm going to have to vote against the hypnotist unless you can promise me that my daughters will not attend anymore.
Sorry. They are the best entertainment out there.
There's video out there.
Yes, there are.
It's not good.
They seem to think it's fun.
They do. They do. They tell too many family secrets.
What are the dates of the fair?
August 8th through the 11th. We're 21 and one day, 21 weeks and one day away.
Thank you very much.
But who's counting?
Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions for Ms. Wilson?
Looking forward to it.
Okay, so, I'll hear a motion for item number six, seven, and eight, uh, if you would.
I'll make a motion that we approve all contracts as listed.
Six, seven, and nine, is that what you meant?
I said six, seven, and eight. Thank you. Six, seven, and nine, as number eight is held. Thank you for that correction.
And I'll second that motion.
Great. We have a motion and a second for items six, seven, and nine. Uh, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. Remember, it's, it's a pig deal.
It's a big deal.
It's a big deal, 8 through the 11th.
Hey, don't say that when Todd's walking down here.
Mr. Ferrario, thank you. Request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Fort Boyanabansura Mountain Men, uh, for the employment of an independent contractor.
Thank you, gentlemen. I think, uh, you'll recall last year, we put this out to RFP. So, this was a new group, and they did a phenomenal job, um, with the addition of a Thursday opening for school kids, and this year, we are going to repeat that, and so far, we have 650 kids, um, from four districts coming for Thursday's events. Uh, it's early this year, as you know, Easter is April Fool's Day, so, uh, we got the park in pretty good shape, and we're out there right now, spit shining it, but I think it'll be another great event and, and good cooperative effort between the county and this group.
As a side note before the comment, can you just give a, just a little two-minute update on what you've been doing with that water feature out there?
So, we took 840 loads of sediment out of the pond. Uh, we built a second sediment pond, um, and dredged the original sediment pond. It is being refilled right now. Uh, there's new riprap for fish bedding, um, river rock around the borders, uh, there's two bouldered areas for fish habitat. Uh, the end of this week, DNR will be placing 130 artificial fish structures in the water. Um, and on the 25th, prior to, uh, the rendezvous starting, the first stocking of 2,000 rainbows will be put in the pond, and there is a stocking schedule for four species of fish, to include wipers, bass, catfish, bluegill, um, with the rainbows also. Um, and this puts it on the list as a community fishery, which means every year, it will be stocked with the species, um, and, uh, it was muddy, a little harder every time you dig, you hit river rock and water comes in, so we rented some pretty big equipment and played in the mud, and, um, the nice thing was, if you guys recall, that back area, kind of the southwest corner, was a little bit of a dumping grounds for year, years. Um, it's been all cleaned up, and we took the majority of that material and covered that whole back area and re-sculptured the ground, and that will all be seeded also to, uh, get the park back to a park, and so, the improvements are coming along.
It's so awesome to have that type of a feature within walking distance of this right here, right here, 24th and Washington. It's just, it's, it's an incredible feature to have at Weber County.
And I'm sure you read every one of those Ramp Grants, but one of them is for an 18-hole championship disc golf course at the fort, and the signature hole, um, for tournament play will be across the pond, and it will use this hand hill as an amphitheater, so the pros will shoot across the pond. Um, Marty, uh, Mr. Guzbi, Mr. Smith, and I went to Vegas, Marty, and, uh...
Mr. Smith went to Vegas.
Yeah. And we met with the PDGA, the Professional Disc Golf Association, and did a presentation about bringing worlds here in 2020. Um, they seemed to be very impressed, and, uh, so it is underway, and we have a pro coming out from Arizona to also put his mark on the course, so there's some big improvements with the addition of Observatory. with the addition of Observatory Park and extra parking and things, so things are moving. So anytime you want to finish twenty-fourth, we're good with it.
We're working on it.
I know you are.
Okay, Commissioners, any comments, or, uh, if not, I'll call for a, a recommendation or a motion?
Well, let me just mention, um, Todd, I appreciate your efforts there, and, uh, one of the things that, uh, it's been fun to, to watch that facility from back when it was a state park, uh, move into county hands, and then even just the last several years, um, when I first came into the commission, uh, you, you were around when we experienced those devastating floods of two thousand and eleven, and, uh, it has been, uh, and there was significant damage to that facility, and we wondered if it would ever get put back together again, and, and thankfully through foresight and, and, uh, tons of effort, uh, from our staff and our community, um, it's, it's in better shape than ever, and of course, a lot of that, uh, was accomplished through the flood mitigation efforts that, that happened after that flood happened and, and was funded through that process, and, um, and I just, I just want to thank, and of course, a lot of it was in-kind as work as well, so our, our people actually had their hands on that project and, and worked on it very hard, and I, I think if anybody saw it, um, in the summer of, of two thousand and eleven, uh, they wouldn't recognize it today. It's just a, it's a, it's a tremendous asset to our community, um, and, uh, and coming from the, the difficulty of disaster that we faced, uh, sometimes as we get a little ways removed from that, we forget, uh, what, how tough and how terrible things really were there for a while, and, and we lose our resolve just a little bit, and I just, I just want to thank you for not losing that resolve and for continuing on and making that a better place, uh, to be all the way through the last seven years.
Well, luckily, we have people like Jennifer that were kind of on the ground when it happened, so as we make these improvements, she brings it back up, and we're trying to burn off some areas, and we learned a few, few lessons last year because we had a small version of the floods, um, that came across, and so it's in the thought processes we move on. As you know, we'll never stop it if it's really bad, but we can mitigate the damage.
Unfortunately, there, you know, there are sometimes, um, we forget too easily, and then on top of that, um, uh, you get, uh, people for whatever reason will try to redefine, uh, that history in newspapers and other things, and I'm just, uh, what a, what a tremendous thing we can point to, uh, in this particular case as well as throughout our county, and I'm proud of you, Todd, and I want to tell you, I want all your staff to know that, and the, the roads crew and everybody else that, that helped in that process. That's something, uh, it'd be fun to see the before and after pictures. It's just a special.
They're, uh, it's pretty dramatic, and hopefully by the end of this year, they'll be more dramatic because we have a ton of vegetation coming back and been thinning and taking bedfall out of there, and so it's getting there.
So I'll make a motion to approve the contract between, uh, Weber County and Fort, uh, Fort Boyanabansura Mountain Men, uh, for the employment of an independent contractor. Does that make sense? Is that the way it was supposed to be said?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? And I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number eleven, Linda Wangsgard. This is a request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Paper Lantern Investments LLC doing businesses Buna Colada for the lease of commercial space in the Weber County Main Library for the purpose of operating a cafe or a shop inside there. Ms. Wangsgard?
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, this contract, like, uh, all the others that are presented in public meetings, uh, was selected through a competitive bid process, and, uh, the contractor plans to be operational by April fourth, uh, the date that has been set for the grand reopening of the main library. As you know, cafes are warmly received in the public service area by library patrons, and the income stream created by the commercial lease space goes directly into our operational budgets, but provides for amenities that otherwise would not be available. The agreement has, of course, been reviewed by legal counsel and approved by the library board, so I am seeking your ratification this morning.
Thank you. Comments, Commissioners?
Linda, do we subsidize, um, the cafe at all?
We do not.
Thank you.
I just had a question, or, well, a comment, and maybe a, a comment, maybe an additional question. Um, I had the opportunity to walk through the library yesterday. I just had a few minutes with a, a few minutes in between meetings and was in the area, and I, I'm just excited about how it's coming along, so I wanted to mention that, tell you thank you for, uh, your continued effort, um, on this project. I think it's, it's looking very nice. And, uh, and my question, I, it seems like I've seen this name before. Is this somebody that we do business with in one of the other libraries?
It is. They have been the successful bidder on, uh, all three library projects. They started with the county in two thousand and nine at the Pleasant Valley branch, and then successfully bid on the southwest branch, and now the main library.
So it seems like it's someone that we have a high level of confidence?
We do.
That they can deliver on what they've claimed they will do.
Yes, we still put them through the wringer.
Wouldn't expect any different from you, Linda.
A very competitive process, but, um, we are convinced they will do an outstanding job.
Good, okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
I'll just make a motion if you're ready, Commissioner.
Just one last comment. For those, uh, two things I just want to bring up because of this contract, but it's, uh, it's, uh, April the fourth is the, uh, is a ribbon cutting at noon, and then two, then on Saturday, which would be the...
The seventh.
Seventh, uh, there is a dedication at two o'clock. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, uh, if you'll put those on your calendar, I will tell you that our main library is absolutely phenomenal. Uh, it's phenomenal in the daytime, and if you drive at night, the lighting features are, are great. I also, if you'll just take a second and just publicly at the mic introduce Phoebe today.
Yes, uh, we're really delighted that Phoebe Carger, uh, newly appointed assistant library director, is going to head up the main library. She has been managing the southwest branch since it opened and has done an outstanding job, and we need someone to coordinate that, um, facility. It's large, it's complex, it's a main library unlike other, uh, libraries around the state and, and, uh, in some cases even throughout the county, it has resources that no other facility has, special collections and archives and so forth. It's a true main library, and so it's going to be a big job, not only to open it, but to keep it, uh, operating in such a way that it can meet the needs of county residents, so, uh, Phoebe's taking on that task, and we're delighted to have her step up and, and, uh, kind of suit up for that responsibility.
Thank you. Now I'll.
Congratulations, Phoebe.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract between Weber County and Buna Colada.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Item number H, now time for public comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Any in the audience that would like to come forward? Now would be the time. Hearing none, then I'll, uh, entertain a motion for item number I.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Will you stand adjourned? Thank you.
Set a motion.
Okay.